Let's call our meeting tonight, Tuesday, June 7, 2022, to order. This is a meeting of the Select Board. It is now just after 7:00 p.m. First order of business, I invite everyone in the room to please join us at the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. You probably noticed we're a little short on our team tonight. We have Selectman Mackey and Jay Kelly will not be with us tonight, so we're a team of three, but that will not deter us from accomplishing the business before us. First item of business, we want to welcome the Tewksbury Memorial High School Robotics Team to the meeting, and they have a brief presentation they want to offer to us and to the community. Obviously, this is a televised meeting, so hopefully the audience will be a little broader than the three of us. So, welcome. You want to introduce yourself and your team?
Awesome, sure. My name is Scott Morris. I'm the coach of the Tewksbury High School Robotics Team.
Thanks, Scott.
So, what I'd like to do is tell you a little bit about our program. We will have the kids demonstrate what the robot does, and then they'll all come up and kind of tell you what they're involved in in the program.
Great.
It's no fun just listening to me all the time. So, this program has been at the high school for 18 years. It's been around a long, long time, had a number of people leading it. I've been there for the past four or five years. We are an after-school program, so this season, the students spent over 250 hours outside of the classroom working on the robot. I don't know if I put more time and more students together. We're well over 1,000-person hours into building that particular robot. So, it's a really big testament to the kids. We have people in tennis, in track, in band, in orchestra, in drama. The kids aren't just doing robots, they're doing a ton of other things. And are any of you not taking AP class? Yeah, I don't think so. All right, so we get a lot of really great kids on the team. We participated in a program called FIRST. It was created by Dean Kamen and Woody Flowers 25 years ago, and we've been in that program for 18 years. So, the kids get a new challenge every year. It comes the first Saturday in January. They have six weeks to design a robot, build it, write the code for it, and make it play the game that they've been given the requirements for. So, it's a pretty short window of time. I don't know, David, what was your number? About 30 hours at a minimum outside of class per week. Yeah, we're there a lot, but it really works out great. So, I could tell you a ton about the team and other pieces, but why don't I have the kids do a little demo, show you what the robot does, and then we can save some time at the end for questions if you have any.
And before you do, just one question to follow and a comment you made. Did you have criteria that you needed to meet in terms of functionality of the robot?
Oh, there's a big, thick book full of specifications around the weight, the size, the kind of motors you put into it, the kind of power that's in it, just, yeah, literally everything.
Got it, thank you.
All right, so these guys will operate the robot for you. Maybe I'll just talk over it since I'm at the mic while you guys are going. So, this year's game, we had to pick up these big tennis balls, and there was a goal in the middle of the field. The field is about the size of a basketball court. There was a four-foot-high goal and an eight-foot-high goal. So, we had to acquire the balls off the floor, collect them in in the robot, drive them to a goal, and drop them off in the goal. The arm, the arm you see going up and down?
He's got probably like, part of the competition, the field he played on, he can't even see the other side of the field, the driver, the captain, but we think all of them. And that's the other element of the criteria, the specifications, is the rules of the game we have to comply with.
Come to the microphone and have spotlights.
You want to shoot, shoot those ones out? Yeah, so the arm in the back that goes up at the, the last 20, 30 seconds of the game? I always forget the numbers. I'm just telling them to go. Yeah, there was a series of increasing-height monkey bars, and you needed to get up on the bar and pull your robot up off the floor. For extra points, you could climb the monkey bars, but we're, we're kind of a low-resource team. We're five or six students and two adults. So, it was really impressive this year that the kids went to both of their district competitions, ranked high enough to go to the New England Championship, did extremely well there, and we were just at WPI this weekend for a postseason event where they not only placed really well at the event, they were an alliance captain and got to pick their partners for their final matches, and they won an award. It was one of six judges' awards that were handed out to over 60 teams, so it was, it was really impressive.
That's awesome.
It was really good. All right, you guys want to come up and talk about?
How much does, how much does that weigh approximately?
113 pounds.
Thank you.
The weight limit that we have this year is 125 pounds. One of the, actually, obstacles, which is normally one of the biggest obstacles for a lot of teams, is they run into problems with weight. They run into problems with getting overweight.
So do I.
We had the, actually, opposite problem. We built our, our bot is so efficiently built that we were, I believe, around 90 pounds. We had to add a 30-pound weight. If you look in the back of the bot, there's a 30-pound weight sitting in the back there to make us heavier so we don't get pushed around as much.
Okay.
To introduce myself, I'm David. I'm part of the, I'm the lead mechanical build. I've been with the team for about, for three years. I'm a junior. And so, we, as Scott said, we compete at FIRST. We compete with three other teams on, every, every time in the field, there's two different alliances of three teams, three robots each. We all play at the same time. We're maybe competing against three other teams, but one of the biggest things is we're all about gracious professionalism, is what we use at FIRST, is no matter what, a team may be having problems, we want to make sure that we're facing every team at their best. That's one of our biggest things, is just facing a team at their best. We don't want to, we want to help out every team the best we can, make sure they're working well. We've had a lot of help from other teams. I mean, if we've had problems, which, we haven't really had any breaks this year, but normally in a year, you have a lot of breaks, and that's one of our biggest problems. But going on to this specific bot this year, last year, we had a couple of problems with durability, and so this year, we thought, well, we're just going to build the most durable bot nobody's ever seen. This bot has been through four compet, four weekend competitions now, over probably 50 matches of three minutes each of really just, and we're, we're a rough-bang-and-defense team. We are, and we've had zero, zero NE parts that have been damaged or had to have been replaced since the start of the season. We're really durable, we're really consistent about everything we do, we don't miss our shots, we are just really consistent and durable. That's like our whole thing about our team is just, we may not be the most fancy bot, we may not be shooting it into the crazy-high goals from super far away, but we're going to be holding down, will be like the backbone of the, of the team. That's mostly the stuff about our bot. And again, six weeks, that came from literally nothing. They give us a game, and we built that out of not, like, they don't tell us what to build, it's just all, all from our brains. We all think about this stuff and just, from the ground up, we use a lot of handmade 3D-printed parts, we model them ourselves and then build them. That's what a lot of our stuff goes into. Now, I'm going to pass it over to Jared to talk about electrical stuff.
Before you step away, I have one question I want each of you to answer. What kind of college major do you want to pursue?
My, I would like to pursue mechanical engineering.
Thank you, good for you.
I'm Jared, I'm a sophomore. I've been with the team for two years. I am the lead electrical. Most of the team, like, a vast majority of the team previously left, even in 2020 because they graduated, it was mainly in 2020 because they graduated, 2021 because they graduated. So, they should, we used it as more of a building opportunity because none of us really, like, David, who was like the only one of us who actually worked on a bot previously, and so we used it as a learning opportunity. We had a, like, throughout the season before we were able to actually, like, make the electrical, we saw what people wanted to actually do it. I was like the main person wanting to do it. We designed the electrical board, like, by knowing, once we got the bot to, about like where the central aluminum tower is built, we designed, we decided where we wanted to have the electrical board, like, the spacing. Then we mapped out with all the electronics, which is all the motor controllers, the power supply, the emergency breaker because safety, the flashing yellow light, also because of a climate of the game is make sure everyone is, it has that, just. And so, we use that as a learning opportunity to teach everyone how to use the tools to properly cut, strip, and this thing called clamping the wires to make sure it has a proper connection with the whole system. And that's about it.
Awesome.
But actually, one more additional thing. We want, in previous years, we've had really, like, messy electrical layouts, where it's like, how to track down one wire.
Yeah.
And we've seen it this year at competitions where it's like, this circuit of wires called CAN bus, which controls basically all of the robot. If one of the wires disconnects, the entire system shuts down. We've seen it a couple of times for Alliance Poitnos, some of the people we were competing against. We've seen it just mess up. So, we want, like, we specifically gave into this year on the electrical side of wanting to make sure that if any problem is code, we're able to quickly find it and fix it.
Yeah.
And now move on to our coding team.
Great. What kind of, where, where are you, what are you thinking about for your future?
Either computer software engineering or electrical engineering.
Okay, I would have guessed that, thank you.
Hi, so my name is William, I'm a freshman, and I'm the lead programmer for the team. Code is a really huge part of what we do here at FIRST. Jared talked a lot about the electronics, but none of that would work if we didn't have functioning code. All of the code is developed in-house to control the robot effectively. We overcame a lot of challenges this year and have been through a lot, especially with our small team. This year, we did a lot of stuff with self-driving, so for the first time, we have an advanced self-driving capability, where in 15 seconds, it can grab a ball, return to the goal, shoot it, and score its points without us doing anything. We also, we overcame a lot of challenges regarding code this year, but it was a huge learning opportunity for us. For instance, you see those fancy lights. The coding team learned quite a lot this year by controlling lights individually, making sure they all sync up, things like that. So, yeah, code is just a really huge part of what we do here at FIRST. And, yeah, it's code, it's great.
What language did you program it in?
We program in Java.
Thank you.
And as you might assume, I plan to major in software engineering.
Very good.
Awesome, thank you.
Hi, I'm Renu Galate. I'm a sophomore, but this was my first year at robotics. Something that doesn't really come to mind when you first think of robotics is business and finance, but it's a really key element because obviously, without money, no robot. So, one of our main focuses of this year was, obviously, since we have a smaller team, was community outreach. We did an event at the police, with the police station and fire department, Safe Halloween, so we got, you know, a lot of young kids' interest spreading the word of robotics and just tell everyone that, hey, this is a cool thing, like, learning, you know, code, electrical engineering, mechanical stuff, like, this is probably one of the only places in town where you could learn these things at such a young age. For business and with a bigger team, we hope to start a business branch of our team that looks out for sponsorships, outreach, you know, more people, and, yeah, get more funding that way so we can take our building to the next level. If anyone wants to learn more about how to sponsor a team and support us, you can reach us at FRCTeam1474@gmail.com, so, yeah.
Awesome.
And what do you want to major in?
I want to pursue something in medicine and surgical research.
Good for you. All right, I have one last question. Everyone has a Titans 1474 shirt on, so what does that mean and why?
So, every single team has a team name and a number, so we are the Tewksbury Titans, and our team number is 1474.
Awesome, okay.
If you think that we're like a high number, we're probably one of the lower numbers. There's teams, rookie teams that started this year are giving, are being given numbers high up into the 8,000s. So, if you guys are wondering what kind of competition we're set up against, it's a lot of teams.
Yeah. Well, judging by your description of, of what this can handle and what the function was, I wonder if it might be available tomorrow night in the third quarter for the Boston Celtics?
Yeah, and just one last thing that I think is really important about us is that we are completely, at the moment, self-funded. We make all of our, all of the money in our budget, which, our budget annually, we have about to $20,000 to $25,000, $20,000 to $30,000 dollars a year is our, like, hope, that's how much we hope to bring in, in our sponsors. We do it all in corporate sponsors. We're not actually funded by, like, anybody specific. We're just, it's all corporate. Like, this year, we have Analog Devices, PTC, Qualcomm, but we're always in, in looking for new sponsors, so.
Good plug.
Anybody knows, anybody wants to sponsor us?
Great plug, good for you, good for you. Well, let me, let me thank you, number one, for doing such a great job and for sharing it with us, and also for representing our community as well as you did. You ought to be very proud of what you've done, and we certainly are all very proud of you, so thank you.
That's Danny Joff.
Awesome.
I'm going to, I'm going to add one last thing that, that we're done here is, we have two seniors that weren't able to come tonight because it's senior week and they have senior events. So, I have lots of numbers and statistics, but, right, people often compare this to sports, and if we were to pursue this like a sport, then we could go to high school sports, then to college sports, and hopefully get to professional sports. But as you can imagine, the participation level goes way, way down until you actually make it into professional. But we have two students going pro next week after they graduate. We have one going to WPI for Biomed and another one going to US Lowell for Civil Engineering.
Awesome.
All right, so I always say that's the greatest opportunities for the guys. Everybody who joins the team goes pro, and you always have that opportunity to go wherever you want.
That's great, that's great. And let me thank.
Can I ask one question before I go? I'm just curious, I'm looking at all this mechanism that's in here, and I know that there's been a shortage with chips and all kinds of things with automobiles, anything like, did you come up against anything that, with shortages of trying to build the things? Any challenges?
Yeah, we had a hard time getting some of the specific electronics. We had a hard time even just getting aluminum at one point, which is still hard to get in certain sizes and shapes. So, yeah, we're going to be on the lookout for the fall to kind of pre-buy them, as much of that stuff as we can as it's available, so we don't run into that, you know, that locked shortage that comes up.
One of our biggest, actually, things that we ran into as a problem was our main computer system that tells everything else in the bot what to do. We weren't able to get in until late.
Week five?
Like, week, week five out of six of all of our, of all of our build seasons, we weren't able to get in our, the main computer that tells the bot what to do.
Liam was pretty happy about that. And then Jared got it wired on week six, and we said, all right, Liam, magic, put all the code in it.
There you go. Well, Scott, I want to thank you, and I know you had some help along the way as well, so...
Yeah, 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 I should certainly invite Victor to come up, so.
It was a great, it was a great experience, it was a great experience.
Awesome. It's great, great to see that kind of leadership and contribution, so thank you again.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Does the robot have a name? Did it name it?
All right, let me, let me ask if there are any residents here tonight that have any business they want to bring to our attention? Nope. Okay, we'll move to our new business agenda. The first three items on this list, colleagues pertaining to pretty much the same topic you'll have in your board packets. We have board and committee reappointments that we want to speak to. It's that time of year. You should have a roster, it's one page, page number two. And you're going to see that these are all residents who have indicated a desire to continue serving on boards, committees that they have currently been on. All the terms would run through June 30 of 2023, with the exceptions of any that have statutory dates. There are a few that go through 2025, as you can see listed. What I'd like to do is, rather than read all of these names, is take them as a slate, unless anyone has any concerns about that.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, but I do have one question for you.
Yes.
The elementary school building committee doesn't have any reappointments listed here.
So, we'll check on that when the town manager comes back, all right?
There are no expirations on that.
Oh, is that what it is?
All right.
The clerk.
Thank you.
They were appointed for the whole term until it's done.
Till the project's completed, yeah, that's typical of a school building, you're right.
Glad you're here.
Thank you for the reminder.
All right, so that was the motion.
All right, so you have a motion made to approve this roster on the dates identified, Mr. Kratman?
I'll second that.
Thank you, it's a good thing because there's only three of us tonight. So, we have a motion made in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that roster will be approved in full as presented. Page number three is our board appointments, designations, and I will run through these. Some of these will hold on, and I'm going to ask you, because we need to dissolve a few of them. Community Preservation Committee, Mr. Kelly wishes to continue. Economic Development Committee, Mr. Mackey wishes to continue. General Bylaw Committee, I will continue. Lowell Regional Transit Rep, it's my understanding that Mr. Kratman desires that position?
Yes, please.
Is that acceptable to you, Ms. Wellman?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll put Mr. Kratman into that position. NIMCOG is Ms. Wellman.
Thank you.
Taxation Aid Committee, Mr. Kelly will continue. Tewksbury Beautification Committee, we have a designated representative, Ms. Wellman holds that seat. Tewksbury Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Committee, Ms. Wellman holds that seat. The Tewksbury Athletic Fields Committee, we're going to dissolve that tonight. And then the Tewksbury North and Trahan School Reuse Committee, I believe, Mr. Kratman, you wanted to serve on that, and Mr. Kelly is willing to step aside, so am I correct in that?
That is correct.
All right. Okay. All right, so you all captured that information, everybody's good with that?
Yep.
All right, so just the ones that we have designated reappointments on, could I have a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion made in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. All right, and on the same page, we have a few committees that we no longer need, the first being the Zoning Bylaw Committee. That committee took action the night of town meeting to dissolve itself. This board needs to take formal action to dissolve it because we are the appointing authority. I also believe that the Tewksbury School Athletics Field Committee is no longer necessary. It was created for the purposes of the new football field, and that has been completed. So, those would be the ones on this particular list. So, could I have a motion to dissolve those two committees?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye on that as well, so that would be unanimous. All right, and then we have a separate agenda item related to the Public Events and Celebrations Committee, which I believe is a similar discussion, but we wanted to put that on as a separate item, so welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. I appreciate the board's time this evening. I think I've worked with most everyone here at one point or another, but for the record, Alexandra Louder, Community and Economic Development Planner for the town and a resident of 1,001 Whipple Road. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Public Events and Celebrations Committee for which I'm the chair. I joined the committee in 2017, but like most things, this committee predates my involvement. It was started in 2014 through the efforts of former Selectman David Gay and his wife Cheryl, who advocated for its creation. They came together with a group of similarly dedicated residents, some of them here with me tonight, to form this committee to coordinate family-friendly community events. The events encourage Tewksbury residents to socialize with neighbors, meet new friends, and showcase local talent and businesses. The committee strives to foster a sense of camaraderie through these public events. This mission has carried the committee from day one, and it has served so well that the events have become bigger than the committee itself, which brings me to the purpose of meeting with you. The committee's flagship events, the annual Fall Harvest Festival and the tree lighting, have grown exponentially each year thanks to the efforts of this great group of people, past and present. However, with exponential growth requires more intricate planning and more coordination with town departments, which is difficult to conduct as a volunteer, to say the least. It demands staff-level attention. Having been on the committee for five years, with nearly three of it as a staff member, I can say with confidence that these are the types of events that deserve staff attention. Given the growth and increasing responsibility these events in Holden Town, I, along with my fellow committee members here tonight, respectfully request that the Public Events and Celebrations Committee be dissolved and the mission and responsibilities of the committee be absorbed into the Community Development Department. I would be the staff contact for events, for the events in town, and will continue to involve residents in the planning and execution of these events. Many people find the process of applying to and joining a committee to be cumbersome. We have missed out on a lot of talented and helpful individuals because they couldn't make meetings, and we often suffer from a lack of quorum. This is not conducive to event planning and significantly hampers progress. It is our hope that these events continue to grow and will be able to involve more people on a short-term basis and ultimately make more people feel like they are a part of the process and part of Tewksbury. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'll hope you consider my request.
Very good. Does anyone have questions?
Just a comment to thank you and your colleagues that are here this evening and previous board members who have served on that committee over the years to bring these great events to the town. So, it has, I understand completely your request, totally get it, I think it's the right move and it's a wise decision, and it definitely has been part of the fabric of Tewksbury over the last few years, and people look forward to these events every single year and have, and you've all done a wonderful job bringing them forward and organizing them, so thank you.
I just have a quick question. Totally agree, this is...
I think these things are somewhat organic, and they take a life on of their own. There's a time and a place to reconsider what's being done, and one of the things that I've learned along the way is to trust the people that are in the trenches. So I can see that there are three of you here tonight, and I heard what you had to say relative to your committee's sentiments as a whole. So that's good indicators to me that changing the makeup or construction of how we do things is probably a wise move. So I certainly would be supportive in that context, and I know that probably puts more responsibility on your shoulders directly, but in my experience to date, they're pretty broad shoulders, and you've done a great job with everything that you've been asked to do. So I have a lot of confidence that, that you'll get some help from people, and you'll, you'll get things moving in the right direction. So, so thank you for that. All right, so unless there are other questions, let me ask if there's a motion to dissolve that committee.
I think we already did.
I specifically skipped over it.
I'm sorry. I'll make a motion and then to specifically disband specifically the public events and celebrations specific committee.
I'll second that.
Second, yeah. All right, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair will vote aye as well, so that's unanimous. Thank you and good luck. All right, moving right along. Sorry about that. Moving right along, we have a proposed street name. Mr. Montori, can you give us some background on that?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the street naming committee that's made up of public safety, fire, police, community development, as well as the town chief assessor, review all the proposed street names. They've reviewed Sophie Ruth Way and have approved it as a street name within the community. Part of the process is the committee will review the street names and make a recommendation to the board of selectmen, so it's being brought tonight to the board to approve the name.
Okay, all right. Committee members have any questions? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the name?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Apparently now we have a Sophie, Sophie Ruth Way.
Where is?
Across from the cemetery.
Okay.
And Sophie, with my granddaughter.
Very good. So people at home probably didn't hear that, but it's across from the Tuxbury Cemetery on East Street, and Mr. Andella, the developer, has a granddaughter who is named Sophie Ruth. So that's the genesis of that name. So congratulate Sophie Ruth, she now has a street in her honor.
Thank you.
All right, number seven on our agenda, we have a sewer easement acceptance for 935 Main Street, and you do have some material in here from Mr. Sadwick indicating that at the most recent annual town meeting, Article 23 terminated the sewer easement at 935 Main Street, and Article 22 was approved at the town meeting, which allowed for a new easement from the new owner to the town. So that Article, Article 22 was written to authorize this board to accept such easement. So we would ask this evening that we approve or accept that sewer easement. Any questions? If not, can I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept a sewer easement as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair will vote in the affirmative as well, making that a three to nothing vote. Thank you for that. And then the last item on our new business pertains to four liquor license violations that were brought to our attention through the police department. And, Mr. Montori, we need to schedule some show cause hearings, and I think you've mapped out a timeline for us. Do you have a?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Chairman. The police department conducted a compliance operation on April 7 of various, the various liquor stores and beer and wine stores in the community. This operation took place after we had a meeting with all of the establishments. There were four that were not in compliance and were found to be in violation of selling of alcohol to a person under the age of 21. They are AJ's Beer and Wine, Beer Wine and Convenience, located at 2316 Main Street, Oakdale One-Stop Liquors, located at 1900 Main Street, Main Street Liquors, located at 391 Main Street, and Lincoln Liquors, located at 10 Main Street. I would ask the board to set a date for a show cause hearing on each of these establishments for June 28, starting at 7:00 P M., and then giving, going 7:00, 7:05, 7:10, and 7:15, in the order of the ones I just read.
Okay.
And just of note, there were second compliance, compliance checks done. Everyone passed, with the exception of Main Street Liquors had a second violation.
And will that violation be the subject of the show cause hearing? Could both? With the first?
Yes, we'll have both.
All right. Okay, so if I heard you correctly, you're asking for motions to approve show cause hearings on June 28 at 7:00 P M. for AJ's, 7:05 for Oakdale, 7:10 for Lincoln, and 7:15 for Main Street.
Correct, and I will send out letters tomorrow to the owners of the establishments on behalf of the board.
All right, and we'll have town council present for that particular?
We'll have town council present as well as the police chief.
Very good. All right, could I ask for a motion to approve or accept that schedule as outlined?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. That'd be unanimous. Okay, we don't have any minutes tonight. Let me just go around quickly here on board member reports. Mr. Kratman, do you have anything?
I just got appointed to board, so I'll have something at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. And I do want to mention, because I know you are very much involved, the Memorial Day events were well-received and appreciated, so thank you. Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really briefly, the, I want to wish everybody Happy Pride Month. Pride is for, we celebrate it in June, and I wanted to note that the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee will be in attendance at the farmer's market with the frontline initiative on June 23 and June 30. We'll be passing out swag, it'll be fun. We appreciate the library and Alex extending table space to us on a very late request, so thank you.
Okay. All right, I just have one thing and then a question. So yesterday was June 6, D-Day, and it struck me yesterday and again today in a conversation that, as those veterans of World War II are sadly passing, we're losing sight of the enormity of that event in, in the free world, if you will. So I just wanted to take a pause and remember with gratitude the many men and women who served our country in that time period, and most importantly, those who laid down their lives so that we can enjoy what we do every day here in the U S of A. And then I have a question, Mr. Montori, just as Ms. Wellman mentioned, the community market, when, when did it start? When is it going to start? Do we have dates on that? Do you mind if we have Alex come back up? I lost track of that, and I'm curious.
So glad you asked. It starts next Thursday, June 16, and runs every Thursday, 4 to 7:00 P M. at Livingston Street through September 29.
Great.
And how do people find out what the vendors are every week?
I will be sending out an email through the town website, and it'll be posted on the town website, as well as the Facebook and the website for the market itself.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and then the only other question I had, I should have brought this up when we did appointments, but my recollection is, in years past, we've required appointees to be sworn in within a certain period of time, and we've communicated that to them. And I just want to, I know there's been some change in staff, I just want to make sure that we're tied off on that. I see the town clerk nodding her head, so I assume so.
Yes, I anticipated Janey's retirement, so I'm going to work with her to get all of that information, so I'll be sending out the notifications of the appointments, along with the appointments list, too, everybody that appointed, so that they can come in and get in and get their overleading law documents and stay up next time.
All right, okay, so it's well in hand, and I appreciate your stewardship on that. Thank you. Every year this seems to be a little bit better. We inch closer and closer to perfection. We make progress, we're not quite at perfection yet, but we're getting there. Thank you. All right, anything else from my colleagues? All right, it's now, what, 7:43 P M.? Let me ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're now adjourned. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.